All right, if everyone could take their seats, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, April 22, 2019. Before we rise this evening for the pledge and the silent prayer, I just, a couple of people to keep in our thoughts and our prayers this week. First, Gene Sherman, who was a member of the Historic Overlook Community Club. He was very involved in Fulton Park and the whole community up there around that park and the restoration of that park. And he passed away last week at a very young age. And so I'd ask that you keep Gene and his friends and his family in your prayers. Also, Mr. Pape, the editor of the newspaper who passed away. We're very lucky in Waterbury to have, continue to have, a family-run newspaper that so heavily covers local community involvement, local politics, and local government. That's not true in so many cities our size today. And while you may not always agree with the editorial stance of the newspaper, you do have to commend their fair and intense coverage of all of the local issues. And then finally, if, you know, once again, a tragedy around the world, across the world, the folks who were killed yesterday in an Easter bombing while they were attending services in Sri Lanka. So if we could just keep all of them in our thoughts and our prayers this week. With that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Brunelli. Present.
Alderman Cavallo. Present.
Alderman Cato.
Present.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Here.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujame.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, the first item of business would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record, and there's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, if you could call the first speaker.
Yeah, first speaker tonight, 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo. Good evening, Lawrence DePillo, 11 Steuben Street. I have four items that are on your agenda this evening. First item is number two, seeking review and approval of a proposed ordinance to ban the use of non-biodegradable disposable carryout bags. I see that not only is the proposal here tonight, but there's a full draft of an ordinance. I may have missed a few meetings over the last year, but I don't ever remember this item being on the agenda. And if I'm correct and it was not on the agenda, then it was never sent to committee, never voted on by this board. And I would ask, if that is the case, how it ended up for a public hearing? And who drafted the language that is attached to that? So if you could find out? I have not been able to ascertain that this item had ever come before this board.
First time tonight.
Well, it's not the way the procedure is supposed to work. Thank you. Item number seven, $1.2 million bond authorization for a fire engine vehicle replacement, firetruck two. That's fine. I understand we have to replace our firetrucks. But the question I have is, what's going to happen with the old firetruck? Are we going to drive it down to the local scrapyard and get $250 or $300 for it? Or are we going to be selling it to another town or municipality? And even if it's 20% of its value, that's almost a quarter million dollars. So then this is where the funny money comes in within the budget. All right? We're going to bond a million-two for a truck, and then whatever it gets sold for, that money gets rolled in the general fund to be used to hire friends in the mayor's office, I guess. The issue here is that this should be a net amount. What the bond is for to purchase the truck, what it is estimated the city is going to receive for the old truck, and the bond should be for the differential, not create a slush fund. Item number eight, $2.5 million bond authorization for various road improvements, milling and repaving of streets. I addressed this issue with you last year because it seems that we have an authorization, then we go out to bid, then we get the bidder or the lowest bid, and then we're paving the streets a week before the asphalt companies close, and then don't understand why two or three years later the streets are falling apart. Because you don't pave the streets when it's ice cold. You pave the streets in June, late June, July, and August. And I noticed that again, this is saying, "and will be utilized for the fall of 2019." How about if we do things a little smarter in the city? How about you pass the authorization, you put it out to bid, you get the list of streets you're going to do, and then when the hot weather rolls around in June and July, you mill the streets and you pave them so that the pavement will stick to the streets? And I'd love to find out what we did last year, since I brought it up, and I would love to know what the conditions of those roads are today and what those conditions are three years from now, since these roads are supposed to last 20 years after we paved them. In this city, it doesn't happen. And last is item number nine, a bond authorization agreement to increase project appropriations and bond authorizations by $515,000 for the installation of elevators at Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools. It seems that it was originally calculated at $1,185,000, and now it's $1,007,000. So the total cost is now 145% of what the original estimate was. And on the back here, it says, "Whereas due to an uninspected increase in the project cost estimates, the estimated cost of the project increased by $515,000." And in the front, it talks about, on the second paragraph, "based on assumptions from previously completed elevators." You know, is that the way we do business in the city of Waterbury?
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
With a 145% of a projected project cost. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I gave you a little cartoon here, and I hope a couple of you kept it. It was Dilbert. It said, "We won the job by intentionally underbidding, but we can close the profit gap by doing extra shoddy work and growthly overcharging for upgrades." And then it's asked, "Are we a criminal organization?" And the answer was, "Not in a way that can be easily proven." Being over by almost 50% is unacceptable, and whoever the individuals, companies, or project manager was who calculated that job should find a different line of work. Thank you. Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I just want to mention this because I didn't mean to sidestep anybody, but there's two people in the audience, well, actually, on the Board of Aldermen and probably in the audience, but several friends of mine on the Board of Aldermen, I did want to mention, who served our country, and I always neglected to mention them, and that's my good friend, Alderman Ernie Benelli. I know he served his country, and I appreciate that, Ernie. And you know, we've got Memorial Day weekend coming up in May, so I'm honored that you served our country, put the uniform on. And my good friend Roger Sherman, who's on the Alderman on the other side of the aisle, and he served our country too. So I just want to let people know. And also Michael Dalton. The only reason I mention Michael, because Mike and I go back a long time, probably not before the Vietnam War, right, Michael? But a little bit after that. Anyways, I want to thank anybody, and all you guys and ladies and gentlemen, who have served and served our country, because, you know, the mayor said this is a very patriotic town, and I know a lot of people here had relatives that served your country, probably going back to the Revolutionary War. So again, I want to say thank you to all our veterans for serving our country. And I'm sorry I missed that, Ernest, because, you know, you did mention me a couple times, and I just want to let people know that, you know, you guys stepped up to the plate for our country, and I do appreciate it. Okay, I had some things I did want to say. I want to talk about Brenda Cato's seeking review and approval of a proposed ordinance to ban the use of non-biodegradable disposable carryout bags, City Waterbury. I wrote this up, and I want to leave a copy here for the sheriff, and hopefully he'll be able to pass it on to you people. Banning plastic bags, shopping bags, I believe is not completely thought out. Local businesses will suffer from bad economics. For example, folks who make the plastic bags will lose their jobs, especially manufacturers who employ them for various duties pertaining to other plastic products like straws, forks, plastic spoons, plastic knives, styrofoam cups, and styrofoam plates, along with carryout styrofoam boxes. Why, it's nothing more than social engineering and fake environmental protection by decree. These are some essential facts you all should know, and I want you to hear. Most plastic products are made right here in the good old U.S.A., from natural gas, not oil. Plus, we are very fortunate to have another century of natural gas right here under our feet, at least 100 years or more. Moreover, plastic grocery bags require 70% less energy nationwide manufactured than paper bags. In fact, it takes more raw materials and fossil fuel energy to grow and harvest trees that make pulp and turn it into paper bags with the whole process, when the whole process is completed. Also, manufactured plastic bags and plastic products consumes less than 4% of water needed to make paper bags. Also, all plastic products produce fewer greenhouse gases than paper or cotton bags. Also, we could take seven tractor-trailer trucks to deliver paper bags, and only one truck to deliver plastic bags, which means more congestion along with traffic jams on our highways and secondary roads. I'm going to turn the page, sorry. Mrs. gets mad at me when I do this with my thumb here. It is what it is. Sorry about that. Take this in consideration. Plastic bags are 100% reusable and recyclable, plus many stores in Waterbury make this process very simple. Some plastic bags are made in China and Vietnam, then shipped here in cargo ships, checked in by officials at the port authorities and our ports.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
Yes, sir. Reusable plastic bags, paper bags, and recyclables, because they make up more heavier, thicker plastic cotton, which by the way, uses more energy to produce in the long run. And a reusable bag must be used no less than 132 times before having a greener environmental impact than a plastic grocery bag. Remember, we all care about our environment and planet Earth, but be mindful about protecting values, private opinions, introducing more government control, and unnecessary regulations being put on the backs of local businesses and taxpayers here in Waterbury.
Next speaker from 5 Cindy Drive, George Stambuloglu.
Good afternoon, George Stambuloglu, 5 Cindy Drive. Thank you to all the veterans and the family members of veterans who serve our country. It goes really nice to acknowledge everybody. Fifteen years ago today, Pat Tillman, the NFL football player, sacrificed his career and his life and his earnings for our country. So a lot of good people, you know, gave a lot for our country. And that's kind of one of the reasons I'm here today, because my dad came to this country in '61 or '62, before Kennedy came to Waterbury, and he came here for opportunity and for a free life and to make a better life for his family. I mean, I'm a high school grad. I make a six-figure income. I'm an investment advisor, doing really well for myself. There's a lot of opportunity in this country. My dad passed away. I was in school with Ronnie. I went straight to work. I didn't have the opportunity to go get free college or any of these things, but I worked my butt off and got promoted every year, and I made a good life for myself here in Waterbury. And the reason I'm here is because I really care about this town. I care about this state. But I'm seeing that there's a lot of people with apathy. And the word apathy is the lack of interest, enthusiasm, or concern. And I'm seeing apathy with the voters, and I'm starting to see apathy with you guys. Not you guys here on the board, because we have some really engaged people here on our board and some really good people, but at the state level, I don't think the politicians care. People are starting to feel like you guys don't care about the middle class, and people are starting to get sick and tired of it. And why do I say this? In my job, I've noticed a lot of people moving down south. I lost like 10 clients this year. They're moving to North, South Carolina and Florida, and it's not clients that are on public assistance. It's not our super millionaires. It's the middle class. It's people that have a couple hundred thousand dollars. They're just tired of paying things. They don't want to get hit with the tolls. They don't want to get hit with the new taxes. And I'm seeing that we have apathy with the politicians, because when you have a governor that flat-out lied about the tolls, knowing that he was going to pass the toll resolution for cars, when you have politicians that are telling us that it's our fair share and it's not a big deal, and you're quoting 44 cents per toll using a study that's for 88, but there's 50 gantries, and there's no tolls going to the casino, but it's for out-of-state voters, people are starting to get sick and tired of this stuff. And I've had a lot of conversations in the last couple of weeks with people, and I'm amazed at how many educated people who read the newspaper, watch the news, and have real jobs, don't realize we're going to have 50 tolls. When I tell them this, and most people see me on Facebook, know I've been anti-toll, beating the drum, beating the drum, and I'm going to keep beating it, because I drive to Hartford, and I drive to New Haven, and I drive all over the place. And I'm considering moving over the border to Massachusetts, because it would be cheaper for me to drive back. And then I'll rent my house here in Waterbury to somebody and collect rent. It's no big deal. I'll keep the house. But what's kind of sad about this is that all these things that a lot of times that the politicians do are affecting the middle class. And I'm here to ask you guys, I know a lot of towns have looked at it, and I know I'm probably beating the wrong, the wrong place, because there's a lot of D's in here, and I'm not picking politics right now, maybe a little bit. I know you guys will probably not talk about a toll resolution and probably not pass one. But Waterbury is going to be affected tremendously by having tolls. Our mall is on life support. I spent 12 years in retail management. This mall is ready to die. You put a couple of tolls on the side of the borders, we're going to have a dead mall, and then it'll be just empty property. And all the people that have jobs that work out of water are going to pay these crazy tolls. So when the governor tells us 4 cents a mile, but it's on a study that's based on more tolls, and when nobody's telling us about congestion tolling, but just congestion every single day, and if I hear Senator Bernstein one more time tell us how it's going to help traffic, it's causing apathy. People don't care. They're not even listening to the news anymore. So you guys could do something positive, and nobody listens anymore. So, because people are stopping to care, I'm hoping you guys start to care and actually look at the middle class and realize that some of these taxes are very regressive and they're not fair to working-class people. I know we want to tax out-of-state drivers. The governor wants to do that? Put tolls on the border. Yes, I know we lose our $500 million, but then charge 25 bucks on the border. But you won't do that, because these revenue numbers are ridiculous. There's no spending cuts. Everybody's talking about revenue, 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 and people are starting to leave. And quite frankly, if I have a few more clients move down south, I'll probably move down south with them. And you guys probably won't see me at these meetings again.
One minute, Mr. Stambuloglu.
Nobody will care. But that's what I mean about the whole apathy thing. I think people are stopping to care. And please, consider an anti-toll resolution, or at least have our state senators and state representatives pick a number, a real number, and stick that number on the toll, not a number that's going to go up and down based on traffic, and not a number that some quasi-public agency is going to jam down our throats every few years. Because just like our taxes and our income taxes and every budget, tolls will go up every single year, and more and more people are going to leave until there's no more good, working, middle-class people here to support these products and these services and everything that we want to do. So please don't have any apathy. Think about us a little bit, you know? Give it a shot. Remember, these things affect people. An extra $1,000 a year might not affect me, but the guy making $40,000 a year, it's going to be no vacation for the kids and no Disney World. Don't have any apathy. Think about us. Thank you.
Next speaker from 551 Willow Street, Michael Salvio.
Michael Salvio, 551 Willow Street. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. President, for those kind words about Gene Sherman. Yes, he loved Waterbury. He loved this community, Overlook, and he loved Fulton Park. And on that note, I just want to invite everyone and let everyone know here, and who are listening to us, that on Saturday, this Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 to 1:00, 10:00 to 2:00, there will be an Arbor Day Fulton Park tree planting. We put a lot of work into it. We received funds from the Connecticut Community Foundation and other good people who donated, and the donations are still coming in, and the community clubs of HOCC, of Upper Fulton Community Club, of Crown Brook Community Club, and Hillside Community Club are collaborating to do this wonderful continuation of the restoration at Fulton Park. We're very proud of it. We welcome everybody. Pal is going to provide lunch for everyone at 12:00. There's two areas that we're going to be planting. There will be pines planted and also flowering trees like magnolias, a yellow magnolia, by the way, very rare, that we're purchasing and planting. So everyone is invited, and we're going to dedicate it to Gene Sherman, because he was such an advocate of Fulton Park, and I think this is a good way we can honor him. So please, please join us if you can. The Waterbury Park Department, along with Public Works, are going to be there with us as they always partner with us in these endeavors. And we all together, as a community, are making Waterbury a very wonderful place to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Item number four on your agenda, the construction contract on the project task two on Jackson Street improvements, and task three, Meadow Street improvements. I would ask that you pass this. If anybody that travels down in the Bank Street area could see the ongoing construction with the new iron ramp coming down and onto the Jackson Street area, I got to give a lot of those guys credit out there working. It seems to be moving at a very fast pace, and I wouldn't be surprised if this project comes in on time and on budget. Item number five, as the city park commissioner, I would ask that you pass this, just mainly a formality on the agreement with EverSource on the gas with the lock rooms. The lock rooms seem to be coming in at a very fast pace, and it looks to me like, I mean, I'm no expert. I know there's a lot of people that come up here like experts, but to me, it looks like we're going to be on time and on budget. If you move over to the request, our item number seven, request approval on bond authorization for firetruck two, I could tell you, truck two is the most active truck in the city. For those who don't know where truck two is, it's on East Main Street. It handles a heavy load of medical responses and usually is, you know, it's a quite busy area with the mall and everything else, and whenever there's a fire, they're usually the first ones there. So obviously, we should be replacing our apparatus, but to correct some of the rhetoric that was said before, and that supposedly we send our unused firetrucks to scrap. I could tell you, I have a friend who happens to be with the maintenance department for the firetruck departments, and anything that is usually salvageable on the firetrucks usually gets saved in case you have to use it for repairs or anything like that. So it's cost savings to the city. Nowadays, firetrucks, it's very difficult to get parts for some of these trucks, so I think what we're doing and saving whatever good parts that we have is good practice. I know in education, when we're replacing sinks and other things like that, we usually save the parts, the pipes, to reuse, to save the taxpayers' money instead of having to go out buying brand-new pipes, brand-new washers and such. I mean, this is just another clear example of what this administration has been doing to try and save the taxpayers' money. Item number eight, the bond authorization to finance various road improvements. Obviously, we all know that the citizens of the city want a continued improvements on the road. In this bond authorization, they would get it. I must say, though, that, you know, to say that the city waits until the asphalt plants close for the year, I would have to judge that we did that, unfortunately, maybe last year, because we didn't know what we were getting from Hartford at the time.
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
Sometimes we don't know what we're getting, but I think that that was a shot at one of the greatest public works directors we've had in the city, who saved the city countless dollars. 25 years, maybe 30, I don't know what it is now, but I know it's up there. Who's done one heck of a job is our Department of Public Works heads, and is always out there, whether you call him, or he's out there on his own time. So, and as far as the elevators, yes, this was an add-on. We're dealing with old buildings, but if you look at it, at the end, we need to become more efficient for our handicap. This is going to allow us to do that. The cost savings is going to...
It's time, Tom.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, the next order of business would be the approval of minutes. We have minutes from the special meeting of April 1st, 2019, which was the budget presentation, and minutes from the regular meeting of Monday, April 8th, 2019. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
Motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting on Monday, April 8th, 2019, and the special budget presentation meeting on Monday, April 1st, 2019. So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The minutes for April 1st and April 8th are approved. Before we go into committees, you should have on your desks a proposed resolution making revisions to the ordinance, I am sorry, proposed revisions to an ordinance dealing with the Development Corporation relating to the Nogat Lake Valley, the Development Corporation to make that the city's regional development corporation. We would like to add it to the agenda as item number 10, refer to the Intergovernmental Committee for the purpose of scheduling a public hearing on May 20th. Is there a motion with respect to adding this to the agenda?
Motion add item number 10 to the agenda.
Made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the item is added as agenda item number 10, and refer to the Intergovernmental Committee. And with that, we will recess into committees. We'll begin with the Intergovernmental, and then we'll go to Finance.
I'd like to call and to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting scheduled for April 22nd, 2019. First item on our agenda, item number one. Yeah, actually, we switched, so we ended up with item number one on our side. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a contract with centralized system and strategies to coordinate health, housing, and energy services between the city and ton environmental strategies in the amount of $25,000, as submitted by Richard Lee, Chief Sanitary and Department of Public Health, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve item number one. Second.
I have a motion to approve item number I have a motion to approve item number one, which has been seconded. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Next item on our agenda, item number two. Item number two, due to proposals, ongoing proposals over at the State Capitol and the Legislature, we are going to hold item number two for this evening. Next item on the agenda, item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen votes not to disapprove the appointments of the following individuals to noted commissions or positions to wit, as submitted by Neil M. O'Leary, Mayor of City of Waterbury; Louis W. Esteponitis Jr. to the Board of Public Works, starting term January 1st, 2019, ending December 31st, 2022; and Barbara Renando, Waterbury Cable Council, term commencing July 1st, 2018, ending June 30th, 2020. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion not to disapprove item number three.
I have a motion now to disapprove item number three, which has been seconded. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Our next item, item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the general gas service agreement between the city and Eversource for municipal stadium locker room facility. This agreement is required before Eversource will install and activate the natural gas line into the building, as submitted by Santiago Bolanos, Civil and Environmental Engineer, WDC. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve item number five.
I have a motion to approve item number five, which has been seconded. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And our last item this evening, item number 10. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen schedules a public hearing on May 20th, 2019, at 6:55 to discuss the proposed ordinance revisions relating to the Nogatuck Valley Regional Development Corporation, as submitted by Michael Kerulucci, Pullman and Comley. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to make a public hearing, set a public hearing for May 20th at 6:55 p.m. Alderman Attichambers.
Second.
I have a motion, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion adjourned.
All those in favor? Oppose? We are adjourned.
Call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number four. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract in the amount of $6,438,465.90 for the Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence Project Task Two, Jackson Street improvements, and Task Three Meadow Street improvements between the city and Guerrero Construction Company Incorporated, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porizio, project manager.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item seven, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen entertain a motion to set a public hearing for 5/6/2019 at 6:50 in these chambers for a bond authorization in the amount of $1,200,000 to finance costs related to the acquisition of a new aerial vehicle apparatus to replace fire truck two, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Alderman Di Domenico. Thank you, Mike. Do we look to recoup funds by trying to sell the aged apparatus?
I think for the next meeting, Dave Martin, I'll ask that he attend to speak specifically as it relates to the fire apparatus. I think the comments that were made earlier this evening speak to one of the options, which is to retain the vehicle and for future parts that would be available for repairs on other apparatus in the years going forward. That said, if the determination is made that the, that it would be better in the interest of the fire department just to sell the vehicle, we do have a program that is administered through the Department of Public Works where surplus vehicles are essentially auctioned off, they're put out for auction. And any proceeds that come in from any of the vehicles that we do auction, it goes into the city's unallocated capital account, and then is available for reappropriation through your approval when it's brought before your board.
So I assume this is the most aged vehicle we have in the fleet for the fire department, and that's why we're looking to replace it?
Yeah, it's been identified by the fire chief as the vehicle that is most critical to be replaced at this time.
Is it unserviceable, do you think? Is it something that could be used in a lesser, busy firehouse?
Again, I would probably defer to the fire chief to comment on that, but I will say that in the assessment that was done to determine that this would be the vehicle next to be replaced, part of that evaluation was the fact that the annual repair costs are becoming significant, and in some cases, some of the repairs are unserviceable by the service garages that do this type of work. They're getting, it's past the point because of the age of the vehicle where they can even be serviced or put out for service, and then it's a matter of using our internal mechanics to keep them going.
Thank you, Mike.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Item number eight, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen entertain a motion to set a public hearing for May 6th, 2019, at 6:55 in these chambers for a bond authorization in the amount of $2,500,000 to finance costs related to a various road improvements as part of the city's road milling and repaving program, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you again. To touch on what a member of the public spoke on earlier, do we normally pave the streets in the fall, or is this something that normally does get done in the spring, summertime? Do you know, Mike?
I don't. To that point, I'll communicate with the Department of Public Works Director, Dave Simpson, and ask that he attend on May 6th to address that question specifically. I will just comment that this appropriation was part of the capital plan that was approved for this year, and we generally, on an annual basis, commit in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 million towards road milling and repaving. There's an extensive number of roads, miles, as you can imagine, in the city, and it's really just, you know, a small portion of really what's needed to address the infrastructure on the road milling and repaving side.
Do we typically bond this type of work, the paving, the milling, paving? Do you ever see us, or maybe it's typical throughout the country, state, what have you, that this type of work is bonded, that we would actually be able to pay for this out of our general funds and not have to bond for this type of work?
I think in most cases, because the, again, it's believed that you get generally 20 years out of a road milling and repaving. As long as the foundation of the existing road is in decent shape, you generally would get the 20 years out of the milling and repaving. To that point, it's a capital outlay that is, to my understanding, commonly financed over the life of the capital asset.
Thank you again.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number nine, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen entertain a motion to set a public hearing for May 6th, 2019, at 6:58 hours in these chambers for a bond authorization amendment to increase project appropriation and bond authorizations by $515,000 for the installation of elevators at Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
So moved.
Second.
We are just setting a public hearing, but Paul, is it inappropriate for me to ask a question on this before it actually goes to public discussion?
You could if you wanted.
Okay. We've seen a lot of these come in front of us where we're increasing due to unforeseen issues. Was this, the work for this, did someone actually go out and inspect and tell us what we needed to do, or did we just assume what we would need to be done at these locations to get the elevators installed?
So the, when the initial estimates were put forward, it was based on some flawed assumptions. The revised estimate that is presented to you for the requested increase of $515,000, for those two elevators, it's based on a specific study that has been performed for each of those elevators by an architect that has gone through and identified the specific scope of work related to each school that would need to be done, some of the specific complications. So what I would say is the estimates that are now being put forward are based on really good, solid assumptions, and in this case, unlike the other prior elevators, we're asking for this increase in the authorization before submitting to the state for the grant approval. You may not recollect, but the prior four elevators, we had applied to the state with assessments that were way off initially, and so had to come before this board, get the approval for the increase on the authorization, and then go back to the state to go through the whole process again. So we're trying to do it better this time around, get the increase approved locally in advance, and then go to the state for their approval.
Did we not have the architecture go out to these two particular sites before coming up with the 1.2?
That's correct.
We did not.
It was done internally through the Board of Education, their school inspector's office, and, you know, the particular individuals involved with that at the time are no longer here. And again, this was before coming forward with you. We wanted to make sure that there would be an adequate internal assessment done, and the Board of Education utilized an architect to facilitate that review.
So it sounds to me like going forward, we should see less of these, if these two particular people are no longer involved? Is that...
It's certainly fully, you know, our expectation that going forward, you know, this will not be repeated, that, you know, the estimates will be fully validated before they're put forward for a request.
Thank you, Mike.
Further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Standing, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,383.15, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Can we retain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is on consent to approve a contract for a centralized system and strategies to coordinate health, housing, and energy services between the city and town environmental strategies in the amount of $25,000. Two is hold. Item three is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Louis Esteponitis to the Board of Public Works and Barbara Renato to the Waterbury Cable Council. Item four is on consent to approve a construction contract in the amount of $6,438,465.90 for the Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence Project Task Two Jackson Street improvements, and Task Three Meadow Street improvements between the city and Guerrero Construction Company. Item five is on consent to approve the general gas service agreement between the city and Eversource for the municipal stadium locker room facility. Item number nine, receiving place on file. Item number 10 is on consent to set a public hearing on May 6th at 6:50 p.m. with respect to a bond authorization in the amount of $1,200,000 to finance costs related to the acquisition of a new aerial vehicle apparatus to replace fire truck two. Item eight is on consent to set a public hearing for May 6th at 6:55 p.m., requesting approval of a bond authorization in the amount of $2,500,000 to finance costs related to various road improvements as part of the city's road milling and repaving program. Item nine is on consent to set a public hearing at May 6th at 6:58 p.m. with respect to a bond authorization amendment to increase the project authorization, appropriation and bond authorization by $515,000 for the installation of elevators at Washington and Bunker Hill Elementary Schools. And item number 10 is on consent to set a public hearing for May 20th at 6:55 p.m. with respect to a proposed ordinance revision relating to the Nogatuck Valley Regional Development Corporation.
Mr. President?
It's on hold.
Did you announce that?
Yes. Item two is held. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. With that, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to accept the consent calendar is read.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, then a yes vote will be to approve it as read, and no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries unanimously. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Dijo Von Carlo as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $10,383.15, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion having been made by Alderman Martinez McCarthy, seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. I would just remind you before we leave tonight that we have the first meeting with department heads tomorrow at 7:00 here, and the second meeting with department heads will be on Tuesday, May 14th. That meeting will start at 6:30. The meeting tomorrow starts at 7:00. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made, and seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. We're adjourned. See you tomorrow night.[1750.15][1750.15]